Call the special counsel meeting to order Friday, November 9th, 5:30 PM at City Hall Chambers. Topic of discussion is city police vehicle. Jim, you have the floor.
Okay, at the last meeting, the council had asked me to get repair bill ordered in a short amount of time since last meeting. I reached out to Marmy's, requested repair bills for the 2013 and 2014 vehicles we currently have. I've provided each member with that in addition to the itemized costs it's going to cost to put the 2014 back in what I feel is going to be a safe working condition for the police department. That bill alone is a little over $1,600 to do that. One thing that's really concerned me, I was looking at the bills from Fisher's back in 523 of this year, we spent a little over $500 to put struts or at least one strut on that vehicle once already. Here we are six months later, having to do the entire job again. It just goes to show that the chargers are not holding up, plus the resale value on the chargers definitely has me concerned right now. The best price we can get is $8,500. Marmy's has reached out to several different other of their contacts, who they reached out to, I cannot tell you, but they all offered anywhere from $5,000 to about $6,500 trade-in value. That was current. If we go much longer without replacing them, we're looking at probably, rough guess, best guess I could give you, probably losing a couple more thousand dollars, plus doing a couple thousand dollars repair damage or repair to get that vehicle back on the street. Like I said, I, in my opinion, my opinion only, I don't feel that we're spending the city's money wisely by keep on putting Band-Aids on that patrol car. The streets obviously through no fault of anyone here, aren't going to get better, you know? It's a patrol car. Highway Patrol, I've talked to them, they're basically giving Dodge Chargers away because they can't find agencies to buy them because of all the repairs and stuff. So, and I think that's pretty much what we had already covered. I do have the proposal for buying, trading the pickup truck versus the car. If you guys want me to go back over that, I would be more than happy to. One other thing that I know, it is an expense to buy and trade a vehicle. I totally get that. Trying to find the best solution, the cheapest and most economical for everything. I reached out to St. John National Bank today, asked them if they wouldn't even entertain doing like a three-year lease, lease to own, whatever, or just a loan, however you want to call it. They wrote up a proposal and it's 4.75% for a fixed term, three payments, once a year over the next three years. It breaks down to $9,148.58 once a year for a total of $27,445.73. That's a little over $1,100 interest you'd pay to get a brand-new vehicle. If we trade the charger, if we trade the truck in, it would be obviously less because we're going to get more for the truck. But my recommendation is, and I would ask the council to very carefully consider allowing us to go ahead and replace the charger because of the issues with it and the fact that it's the least financial for the city. I mean, we're not going to get any more than $8,500. I was afraid after it was over at Marmy's for the repair estimate and stuff, they would probably come back and give us a lower quote than what they did bid. I spoke to Deesa today again, and she used her view that the $8,500 is still on the table for the trade-in.
Thoughts from the council, questions?
Well, if I run my numbers right, you've spent $507 on this vehicle. The other bills are all oil changes and things like that, which are normal maintenance, wear and tear items. On this bill right here, the estimate that you have, brakes, rotor tints, that's normal wear and tear. Struts and the sensor is something that you may have to do. Alignment, pretty much a normal wear and tear. The rack opinion redo, I don't see that that's out of line. And that's done at Marmy's where they charge you $100 an hour labor. We bought a lift to do things like this here, and we have people that work for the city that can make a lot of these repairs. Not at Marmy's, but that's, most of that's normal wear and tear. And Fisher did one side for $507 and aligned it. He would probably do it for a thousand.
I think that's both sides. There's two different part numbers on them struts.
Did he do both sides?
I'm assuming because there's, there's an item number here that says torsion strut and then the other side is a different, a different part number, so I'm assuming.
So he did both sides, you think, for $507?
I would imagine so.
Yeah.
Is there a quote for the, for the price to repair the charger right now from?
That's, yeah, from Marmy's, that's the top copy.
This one here, 16, is it 166640?
That's what, that's the way I read it, and that's for both sides. The $800 that they got down there originally, they, they did clarify that with me on the phone, said that was for just one side, so.
Yesterday, you told me that they told you it was not safe above highway speeds.
Yes.
Highway speeds, 65 to 75 mile an hour.
But like I explained, I'm not going to have one of my officers potentially have to be driving that and get a call to back up an officer or anything else where they're going to have to go out on the highway and drive faster. It's an officer safety issue, and it should be a concern for the commission.
Where are you going to go, you're going to go about 75 mile an hour?
If one of my officers gets hurt, they're going to sue the city, they're going to sue me, and that's a risk I'm not willing to take.
Radio runs at 786 miles per hour. No one can outrun a radio.
If an officer calls for a backup, they need to respond. If you can't figure that out, then I'm sorry.
I don't think we need to go out of town in the first place.
Where do you live at?
Where do I live? I live right here, and I have a farm over by Maxville.
What happens if you're out in your farm, enjoying your piece of quiet, and some idiot decides to come and hurt you, and you call for law enforcement? Everybody's going to come around. Do you not want us to respond?
I don't need 10 people responding, and I've never had that many.
What did you find on how much money they have put away?
Well.
Who did you?
You guys really should probably just stop having me research things. And maybe you were here when they bought the other vehicle, so, and I could be understanding it incorrectly, but from what I researched, the equipment reserve fund is kind of the catch-all, but that's not where the money had been being transferred to. It's a capital improvement fund, which is Fund 50.
Designated for the police department.
Yeah, police and fire and pool and, like, there's a few other ones.
So each one has their own?
Correct. But here's my problem. The last vehicle, or the charger, was bought whenever with, I'm assuming the assumption that that's why we're holding this money back, because that's what I always heard and understood.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, the money that they transferred into that capital outlay was for vehicles or whatever.
Right. But when I did, when I dug into it a little bit more, the police vehicle, the charger, was being paid out of equipment reserve.
So the money that was put aside was paid out of equipment reserve instead of that special fund within the police department? And what is not known is if the council intentionally said, "We're buying this vehicle out of equipment reserve," which I wouldn't think they would have, knowing that they had the fund to do the other, but that's just something that would...
Because we actually borrowed money on the charger and the payments were to come out of that capital outlay.
And that's what I assumed, because it was $5,000, and that would have covered the payment. So, the money is there, but it's...
What do you mean the money's there? How much money is in that?
His capital outlay is still 20...
26.5?
No, 20, 24.6.
24.6.
But that's not including the payments that weren't taken out of it, you know what I mean?
Right. You've spent money from somewhere else.
How much is it expected to be transferred in there? Do you guys know?
$5,000 is probably what's always considered aside to transfer in there at least.
There was one year they did 11,200.
And seeing that was actually supposed to be at the end of the year, I think we transferred that in there to make the next payments on that car.
I would fix it if it was my vehicle. If I owned it, I'd fix it.
And I don't remember how much the total was, I don't, I didn't find, I couldn't, I didn't, when I came in, just before here, I was going to try, I thought the papers were still in that folder, but they weren't, so, of like how much we actually spent. I guess my spreadsheet would tell us.
On this repairs from Marmy's.
I think that is to fix, I think that is to fix one side. So, take that time too, and that's what you get for it.
I'm just wondering what these other numbers are down here. They're totally different.
Well, I think one of them's broke down, is all the parts, and there's $755.20 in labor.
Got you.
That's the way I understand it. This is all the parts, $911.20, and then $755.20 is the labor to fix it. Seven five.
Marshall.
Sixteen fifty six forty.
Brakes, the parts and labor on brakes, that's a normal wear and tear item. I mean, that's something you should do all the time on your vehicle. The dynamic sensor and the stretch are the only thing it's not, and maybe the rack is not a normal item.
Remind me how many miles are on this charger?
Right at 51.5, I believe.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, when you drive around town, you probably do brakes, you know, suspension, you know, that's probably just a pretty normal thing.
You bounce one across these dips, you're up to the front end.
I know, that's probably, you know, maybe happened in the past, I don't know. I would maybe like to see, Jim, maybe getting a price from Fisher's to repair this, maybe someone from in town that maybe someone's not looking to, you know, or not looking to trade our vehicle with them, and they're wanting to fix it, and, you know, whether this price, you think that's fairly accurate or not? Seems like a...
Brakes and drums and stuff, we got lifting here and...
I mean, is that a fairly reasonable price to replace that stuff? The 1,600?
I think it's high.
It's high? No, I'm sure it's high because it's priced on parts.
I think you can go to Napa and get them, well, if we go to Napa and buy the parts, it's going to be half of that if we do part of that ourselves. If you go to Fisher's, Fisher's going to mark up parts, but we can buy parts for the same price as Napa that Fisher does. And drums and rotors and stuff like that, I mean, you can take them someplace and get them turned and put new brake pads on. I mean, that's, the only thing that might be difficult, that I, I don't know anything about rack and, rack, and do you marshal, you ever worked on a rack?
On some of the older stuff, not necessarily the newer stuff.
Alignment, that's, Fisher, Fisher does a hell of a job on alignment. And it's in town.
Yeah. Yeah, my concern, you know, and it's just my concern, is the fact that six months ago, we, we've already done this once. Now we're back to spending another, you know, $600, $700 every six months on that car. It's a five-year-old car.
Did we verify?
I'd like to have stuff that is only five years old.
Is that the front struts? I'm sure that car has struts all the way around.
I'm sure it does, I'm sure it does. First, it's all the way around.
Are we talking like they put the front struts on or the rear struts?
We'd have to slurp.
I mean, because if it's got struts all the way around, they might have replaced the rear ones and not done the front ones. I don't know. And maybe it don't have any struts on the back.
If you don't, if you buy a new one, it's not taking care of any better than this one, it'll be the same piece of junk in a year or two. This one hadn't been taken care of.
Yeah.
And that's not your fault, but it hadn't been taken care of.
I appreciate bringing this to us, Jim, you know, and considering, you know, you don't want to keep piling money into it, but I would almost like to see you maybe go out to Fisher's, get a price from them. If it's any cheaper, use them. If not, use Marmy's, but I would like to see it fixed, so. I don't know, I think maybe Mel might be able to do something to that.
The relvers do a lot of it.
Well, I mean, brakes and rotors are... Yeah, I know, but I mean, is he, is he going to have time, is what I... Well, I don't... I mean, I can, I can see projects around town that maybe are maybe more of a priority of these guys.
I think as cold as it is, Mel might be really damn glad to have the job in there on the lift.
Yeah, I know, sometimes.
And quite frankly, my guys have put brakes and rotors and struts on it.
I think he...
I've got a lift just like the heavy hair.
I think Mel does work on different projects sometimes, not always works.
Right, right, yeah, that's...
If we were to replace this car, when would you think about replacing the pickup?
Honestly, probably towards the very end of next year, first part of the 2020, after I've had a chance to evaluate the budget and stuff like that. Because, I mean, the, the truck currently right now has roughly 74,000, well over 74,000 miles on it, so, you know, within another year, year and a half, it's going to probably do no fault of its own, it's going to start taking its toll on the budget to nickel and dime this, to replace stuff, so, you know, that's my concern. I mean, all the vehicles are, you know, five, six years old, and they wear and tear. And, you know, hopefully we can, at some point, get to where we can do, you know, a replacement every three years, which I know that's expensive, but if we can do it every three years, we get a higher resale, which would be cheaper for us to, out of our pocket to replace them. But unfortunately, emergency services is one of those necessary evils, and you got to spend money to keep up with quality of equipment and stuff. And we've had it replaced for five or six years, and we've got two vehicles that are starting to show that they're aged. Like I said, unfortunately, with the charger especially, I think if you wait another year or so to get rid of it, the $600 or the $8,500 that's being quoted now probably is going to realistically go down to, you know, five or six, and it's just a rough guess. If you try to sell them on purple light, you're probably going to get even less than that.
I guess my problem with waiting on getting it, the issue kind of that we're having now is cars are bought too close together to where I'd like to spread them at least every three years, so if we did get one now, even though we can get it fixed for this, I'm kind of feeling like if we have the money, it seems like we're really close to about what we need to have. I'd hate to run that fun down.
I mean, we technically have money, but, I mean, basically we have money, but technically we don't.
I'd hate to run the fun down all the way.
And that's why I reached out to the bank to see what they could do, and it, to me and pick more financial sense to, you know, this way, spend $9,000 this year, $9,000 next year, $9,000 the third year, and then you've got a brand-new vehicle.
I think that works out good, because then after those three years, that truck's going to be in enough shape, then that's what I'd say is okay to replace it. Then from there on out, we can alternate at least every three years.
Well, by the time you trade this car off, you'll be buying a brand-new one.
So, the money's there, they're going to spend.
I, you know, we had the meeting Saturday, and we talked about our biggest problems in this city are infrastructure. Water, which we're looking at spending $100,000 there. It's going to be an ongoing expense. We've got the city, we've spent $55,000 just for materials. If you double that, it'll be $110,000, because depending on by materials, you're going to double it to get cover the labor. You've got a quarter million already in the streets on first floor. We've got more streets that are crumbling, we've got a sewer that's crumbling. I don't think we personally have the money, because I think our infrastructure is going to heat us up. And we had the meeting, and infrastructures are probably, that's where we earn, that's where we earn our money, is selling electricity. That and antitrust taxes. And just because we can, I don't think we should increase our antitrust taxes 2% every year just because we can. And I certainly don't think anybody in this town wants their electricity rates to go up 30%. So I think we're on very limited bets as to how we spend our money, and I think infrastructure is far more important than everything. If there's any one of us here that drives a vehicle, maybe, maybe your vehicle's new or this vehicle, but I don't have a vehicle that's new, and they've all got three times as many miles. And they go every day, they go through blizzards, they go at night, they go on dirt roads. We're charged at one square mile. The county's charged, they're charged 750 square miles. Yes, they've got a vehicle for everybody that works for the county, but they live at every corner, and they cover 750 square miles. We have three vehicles for one square mile.
Actually, we have two. Third year for your furniture, that's the 2002, that is not, please, to set up some response from the city. My state sector. I'm just telling you.
Okay, but it's still good enough to use it as a vehicle to exchange emergency vehicles between the officers on park.
Right, I would agree with you there.
So you have, how many of them vehicles do we need for 1,000 people? Seriously, how many people there? 5,000 people. And if you stop Minnesota from pulling them out east of town, maybe we'd decline quite so fast.
How far out is the new vehicle?
They'd go somewhere between 12 to 14 weeks, three times for a quarter. It could be a little quicker, but I would definitely lean on the 12-week type.
What are your plans for visiting?
Depends on what the council says, I mean...
I mean, if we said we wanted to buy a vehicle tonight, I mean, you're down, you've got one vehicle.
We can put the, I've reached out to an individual that does work on the vehicle, that 2000, we can put a siren box on there and get that where it is, emergency equipped, that it would be limited, so we could use that vehicle, so we would be back up to two without them. But I would have to be allowed to put a speaker and siren into that vehicle.
What would that cost to do?
Roughly about $200, $250, $200.
If you were spending your money, what would you, I'd give that one up at the third to get it done, but if it was my money, I'd get another charger because chargers are not a good tool for that.
And another year's going to cost you more. Six months ago, we already rebuilt that front end, now we're back to rebuild that.
You know, I've been rebuilding vehicles for 70, damn near 70 years. Ever since I could put a wrench in my hand. You know, repair on vehicles is pretty much something happens.
So that $1,000 over taken from the upstairs?
Well, they didn't do brakes the last time, so you do the brakes, that's, their brakes are going to be good for 40,000 or 50,000 miles unless somebody totally abuses them.
Replacing the rack, it's a five-year-old vehicle, it's only going to get older.
It's only going to get older, and new ones are going to only get more expensive.
And I can't do the math from what mechanics have told me in the past and everything. They said whatever the mileage is on the patrol car, might as well just figure that that's the double amount of the wear and tear of the vehicle, because we're in it, you know, I can't count the number of times I'm in and out of my vehicle on a daily basis since I've been here. Guys are in, stopped, starting. So, you know, yes, it shows 51,000 miles on the quarter under, but realistically, with most mechanics, we have no reason why we'd say, you know, you could easily double that. We're looking at 100,000 miles basically on the charger and 150,000 on the truck.
I'd say it's very similar to the service that I do to a pickup, or your service, you're in and out all times, I'm in and out, I'm 50 times a day. Only thing I wear out normally on mine are the door handles.
I'm aware idle time, idle time on the police vehicles is pretty bad on them, you know? If you get a vehicle that's 100,000 miles, it's, it's pretty hard on them.
And I would probably agree with that, because they do spend quite that time idling on, you know, hauls and, and just, you know.
What are your thoughts?
I would like to get it fixed, get a quote from Fisher's, and then if it's not any sh, if it's not any cheaper, to get it from Marmy's and get it fixed, because if it's cheaper, it's better for Fisher's, is what I'd like to see.
Marshall, thoughts?
I don't know, I'm still thinking.
Mark, thoughts?
I think that if we can do these payments, then I don't have a problem with getting this vehicle. I do agree with these sides, though, that we don't want to deplete this too much, but if we can go ahead and get this right here, then we should go ahead and do it. Just my opinion.
I really don't want to do it. I don't know if I want to make a decision to do it yet.
Table it. We're going to table it? I would be table it. The council makes council.
My thing is, I want to say something here. If we're going to replace it, say we decide to now, if you're looking at replacing the pickup the end of 19 or 2020, we don't have the funds to make two separate payments. I mean, that's my thing. If we buy a vehicle now, I'm probably not buying another vehicle for another three years till this one's paid off, because I don't think the funds are there, and, I mean, we can't keep raising taxes like Jim said, or utilities to create the income that we need. We're going to have to start citywide maintaining and putting money into vehicles. I, I've got a 13-year-old service truck. Yes, I've put $10,000 in it in the last two and a half years, but, I mean, it's a $110,000 truck, not a 20,000, I would do that. But, I mean, when you weigh out what it costs to replace a service truck like mine to what it costs to put money into it, at this time, even at 13 years old, it's still cheaper to put money into it than to go out and buy a new one. And I just think we're going to be in a spot in a year or a year and a half that we're wanting another vehicle, and we physically can't afford to do it.
But then again, on the backside of that too, you know, if you've got two crappy vehicles, then what do you got? You're dumping money into both of them, you know, so, I mean, I...
I mean, I'm almost to the point that I'd like to roll the dice and see how that car is in eight months or a year. I mean, fix it, see if, see if our city guy can do it, if he's able to do it, knows how to do it, see if Fisher's can do it, see if we can cut this $1,600 bill in half, and, And, I mean, I'd be more apt to put eight hundred dollars in it and get it by for six or eight months and then, and then replace one and but borrowing money and paying one off for, make a payment next year. And then at the end of next year, turn around and buy another vehicle. Now you have sixteen thousand dollars a year in payments to get you out of a vicious cycle that has not been planned for for the last fifteen years.
Right, exactly. A hundred percent.
You know, I mean, I just, I don't think in twenty twenty, we can afford to buy, have two new vehicles. I don't. I don't think the budget, I don't think the money would hold it.
So potentially the, the idea is to keep these and, and run them till they can't run, but, but fix them. But that way we can plan to establish that fund a little better to then get into a cycle where we can replace them.
I mean, we've already had to cut the budget for next year.
Right, right.
And I fear that if we have to cut it again next year when we do twenty twenty's budget, we need to be paying attention because we aren't gonna be able to afford these payments.
Sure.
I mean, it's a long-term thing. I understand they wear out.
Right.
But I'm, I'm almost willing to throw even sixteen hundred dollars at it because a lot of that is service stuff. You know, most of the repairs that have been done to it is no more than
Just service, just normal service.
Just normal wear and tear. I would, I mean, we can make a decision tonight. We can table it and see what Fisher's can do, what our own city crew can do. I'm but I would like to, and I, you know, I know that's more work for you, Jim, and, and less knowing what's gonna happen. But I just have a fear that we can't afford to buy a vehicle this year right now and what next year, the fall, or the following year.
Even with borrowing money or spending what we have, it's, it's still an ongoing, uh, deal where we won't ever get out of debt or we'll keep paying on it. If we buy them so close together at three years, whether we get a loan for it or we pay outright for it and keep dumping into that reserve. But that's one way to think of it. I think we do need to come up with an idea as far as when to replace them and all that. I think we need to come up with a plan.
And you know, if we, if we be very generous with our budgets throughout the year, if there's nothing that says you can't roll more into that fund to build it up for future purchases.
I agree.
You know, say your budget, you save ten thousand dollars extra and you wanna put an additional five in it at the end of the year. I would much rather build that fund than be depleting it and being behind.
Right.
And I mean, really twenty-four hundred dollars interest isn't that bad, but
I don't think that charges going down the price very much at all. For too long, I mean, it's not going down much.
If, if they're gonna bottom out as to what they were, they bottom out because news, new vehicles cost so much more money, so they're not going to go too damn low.
I understand probably someone saying, well, I'm not buying a police vehicle because I know what happens to them. That's probably why the value of that car is not there.
They're run, they're run hard.
They run twenty-four seven.
They sit all the time.
They run hard, get put up wet.
I mean, it's just one of them things that it's, I can understand.
I know. Burn up the highways, you know, this one's just being tamed for Well, maybe better burn it up on the highway than let it set out there and idle twenty-four seven. To me, it
Not necessarily.
I wouldn't want mine, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want mine set in idle.
I don't know if you've seen. I mean, that's where my big issue is, is, you know, we're gonna be borrowing money and then we're gonna wanna purchase another truck, even say twenty twenty in another flow over a year, and then we're not gonna be able to afford to pay for either one of them.
Sure.
I would say get your third vehicle, put a siren box in for two hundred. Make, make it work usable.
Make it work.
Make it work.
I mean, I would like to, I would definitely like to see what Fisher's, if, if, I would actually like to see if our, if Mel can do any of this stuff here.
That'd be my first stop.
Yeah, it's like, we've, they've got a lot.
I know.
They can be doing around town and there's no reason to be putting them in the shop.
But he's in the shop taking care of stuff right now.
Yep, they keep them inside anyway.
Because Mel, Mel's pretty much inside, I'd say.
The cold weather and stuff, he can't, he can't
He can't even run the brakes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, well, I just don't
I mean, I'd still like to check both of it. If, if it's gonna be a conflict for
If you get Fifth Street done, you prefer to have Fifth Street done first.
If it's gonna be a conflict that they can
I mean, that's another project. It's another greater, you know, and
So we're on the same page as far as getting it fixed. So the, are we?
Well, I'm not, I'm not opposed to getting it fixed.
I'm not opposed to getting it fixed. But if we have the money that we can possibly do this, then I'm for that. But if we can get it fixed and if we can do it cheaper than what's quoted right there, you know, that might buy us a little bit more time to put more money into it and then be able to get a new vehicle. Cause I, I've always said that, you know, you need the tools that you need. Your vehicle is a tool for you, for all of your officers and yourself.
I'm, I'm not opposed to getting it fixed. I mean, that's the thing. It is a safety issue.
Right.
We're not gonna disagree with that.
With Jim spending one that up a thousand dollars, if it is cheaper to have Mel do some of it and have Fisher's do some of it, then it'll be fine. But if it is, I mean, you know, I wanna get the car in and fix it.
Here's the thing, the car is not any good the way it is.
I don't wanna wait three weeks. And I know how it goes.
As far as I'm concerned, if, if we can get it fixed cheaper or the same price here in town, fix it.
I would rather fix it here.
Exactly. I'd rather spend our money locally.
Right, and I'm fine with that.
Right. Is Fisher driving on Saturday?
No, no.
I don't, well, once in a while I do that. Troy works on Saturdays, but I don't.
I should be able to check with him by Tuesday, cause Monday's a holiday, but I should be able to check with him.
He'll, he'll be working Monday if that's what you're wondering.
I mean, I, I'll be working. I can definitely, uh, run it out to him and see if he can do it and see how much he needs.
You know, and you might clarify whether they put rear struts on it or front struts on it. And, and have him look and see if Troy Marmis, Troy used to work for Marmis. He used to work for Chrysler. So he knows Chrysler rather well. So I mean, I don't
Okay, so what I need from counsel then is, do you want, I want a consensus of counsel. Do you want the city crew to work on repairs for this vehicle if they can do some of them? I need a consensus, yes or no? Or do you want the repairs done at a mechanic shop? I'd say mechanic shop. You know where I'm at.
I'm fine with wherever. Wherever's gonna save us the most money.
Mark?
Yeah, I'm, wherever saves us the most money.
I mean, if, if Mel can only do the brakes and the struts.
I'm gonna ask Mel first.
I wasn't happy about buying it left and I wanna see
Right, get it used, yeah. Okay, so
That's where I'm at. I would, I
It needs to be used, dude.
I'm not happy with stuff not getting done around town either, so Jim, I would, I would suggest to you to please, um, contact your contact about getting a Chevy pickup outfitted so that it's legal to be used as an emergency vehicle. Secondly, I would get ahold of Jim, um, correctly whenever he answers this phone any time. But to ask him Well, he's on call. He's on call for one of his stuff. But just to see if he would allow Mel to go ahead and do some of that. Maybe you can explain to him what you need done. And see if Mel is capable of that and able to do it. You could get it done within a week. And then of course, after you know that, then go to Fisher if you need something else done.
If it needs all the struts and the, and the power steering and he can do it, Fisher's are still gonna have to do it in line. Once you take that stuff off, it needs to be aligned.
So I would see what they can do first. And then at that point, then go to Fisher's to have the rest of it taken care of. And that should probably come under, under your budget that you should be able to make those repairs.
I don't really care if it's a little bit of a mess for the technical thing to fix because it's
But that's what I was trying to do.
It's the same thing with the bus wreck that don't run. You gotta fix it.
Right. Is counsel okay with what I've just informed Jim? I know you're not. Counsel butt riot is what you're supposed to say. I'm asking.
I am.
Marshall's okay. Mark, Esaio, Jim? Okay, well, guess what?
You know, and I don't care whether you have Mel do it or take it to fit it.
So then, do we need to
I don't want to catch the nail.
Do we, do we or Jim put together a plan to buy one later on? Cause I think that's something we need to figure out.
Jim, when you were opening the office, did you find anything regarding a payment plan or any type of buying plan? Because I, correct, anyway, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't Adam say that he was going to be putting something together? And he was supposed to bring it to counsel at one point, but then everything went, oh, got shot, all the help?
Good luck.
So far, I've not found anything other than where they purchased the charger for twenty-two thousand dollars. And I can't remember what they purchased it for. And supposedly the charger, they bought that through a three-year, uh, one lease agreement through Sterling thing.
I would, I would certainly say that we should get to hear in and see what our numbers are. You know, and see what the police budget is and see what we can move around. That would certainly be a good time to really start looking at what we've got at that point and what we can start budgeting for in the future.
I think it needs to be done through all departments.
Absolutely, yeah.
Basically a strategic plan.
Which they are, you know, the department heads are responsible for creating their budget.
In that case, you better figure out how you're going to capitalize depreciation and figure the useful life of whatever vehicle you're using and then capitalize depreciation because it's a true experience.
Right.
Well, there's that. I'm glad counsel and Ryan approved. Counsel and Ryan.
That's where I'd start.
No other business. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Ryan Sanders, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed carries five oh. Meeting adjourned at six eleven. Thank you for your time, gentlemen and ladies.